You are watching XS Laporte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the September third twenty twenty four meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, September third. City council meeting, if you would, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the silent prayer and also silent your electronic devices.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, just as all.
Ms. Nylam, if you would, please roll call.
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Mr. Coulter. Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Dr. Cora.
Present.
Ms. Lee.
Present.
Ms. Moldenar.
Present.
Mr. Nelson.
Present.
Mr. Preszbalinski.
Present.
And Ms. Tilk.
And Councilman Coulter and Councilwoman Tillman. Contacted me today and both are excused from this evening's meeting. Approval of the minutes, everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the August twentieth meeting. Any corrections, deletions, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion to approve by Dr. Cora and seconded by Councilman Jill Nelson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Minutes passed, reports of any standing committees? No standing committees, finance committee?
This president. The finance committee did not meet, but I just want to read the account balances. The twenty twenty four riverboat fund statement of cash position as of nine thirty twenty twenty four. The fund number twenty two thirty five riverboat fund, the balance, ending balance is one million six hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and forty one fifty cents and the rainy day fund, which is twenty two thirty six, the ending balance is one million eight hundred and forty eight thousand seven hundred and sixty three seventy one cents for a total of three million four hundred and sixty two thousand five dollars and twenty one cents.
Thank you, doctor. On this evening, there are no claims on a claims docket, so we don't have to vote on that. I let me just, I just want to take a step back since it has to do with financing and the Baker Tilly workshop is tomorrow night at five o'clock in the E O C room as a reminder. Okay. Moving forward, reports from boards and commissions, any boards or commissions here this evening? None, reports of special or select committees? Have none, reports from the mayor or other city officers and the fire chief is here this evening?
Good evening, council. Fire chief, fire tailor, just give you a call rundown of what we had in August and so for August of two thousand twenty four, we had a total of four hundred and sixty six calls. Now it breaks down to fourteen fires, three hundred and fifty eight EMS calls, medical calls, twenty hazardous conditions, six service calls, fifty four good intent, eleven false alarms or false calls and three special incidents. And I know it was sent out later today, but you guys did get this this particular page correct to give you the breakdown of what each one of those categories is. If not, I can get it to you.
Here's what I got.
Yeah, that gives you the breakdown of each category of what we have, so I don't have to go through everyone.
Oh, okay.
Like structure fires, like our fires, it breaks down structure fire, you know. And if you guys ever come across that and have any questions about any of those, definitely ask me. You know, give me a call, send me an email or text or whatever. And on those medical calls, Narcan was used six times in the month of August. Which puts our call volume for the year at three thousand three hundred and seventy calls, which is ninety one more than what we had at that same time last year or three percent. Other than that, I don't really have anything. On September the eleventh at Ames Field, we'll be doing our annual nine eleven run, they're doing the stair climb. If anybody wants to come out, I don't have the time right now, I was trying to get the time and I don't have a time, it's usually in the morning around nine, maybe nine or ten. Once I get the time, we'll post that on our Facebook page for anybody to be able to go and see, but it'll be September the eleventh at Ames Field like we did last year.
Okay.
Commemorate nine eleven.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Because I know the fire department takes care of the lifeguards and manages that program. So how's it going this summer down there, is it, you know, a lot of near drownings or?
I, you know, from what I could.
I haven't heard of anything, actually.
From what I could tell and from what I know of this summer, it's actually, to me, it was somewhat quiet. We kept a couple incidences and we got praise from the police department. Chief Corley sent me an email, officer, it was on me, I can't remember, one of the shift commanders, whatever, wanted to praise the lifeguard, said he did a really good job. It was somebody out in the water, I don't, I don't remember the details, it's been back since like June or something. But but they had a positive outcome. So like I said, same same here, I, everything I've heard is has been good and it's really been quiet compared to other years from what I could tell. If there's any information you want from that, I can get that from you because Frank Rebeck, our deputy chief administration, he he heads up the lifeguard, so he would have better information on exactly what went on down there than what I would. But if there's any information you need, just send me an email, let me know, we'll get that for you. But like I said, same, like keep saying it a thousand times, it's been quiet and I was happy for that.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, everybody's happy for that, yeah.
Everything that seemed to happen was, you know, usually some little kid got lost and got away from the family, that's been the biggest thing we always, and we always deal with that, so other than that, it's been good.
Okay, I don't know, do any other council members want any summertime activity information from the fire department?
Questions, complaints, complaints, I'll take them all. No?
Plenty of complaint or compliments, no complaints.
I appreciate it, thank you very much, you guys have a good rest of your evening.
All right, thank you, sir. And the mayor is here this evening?
Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
I know Chief Corley sent his report to you, can be here today, happy birthday. Chief Corley, everybody thinks he's my real brother, but he's not, so anyway, a couple of things, great Oktoberfest weekend, really no incidents. Packed at the beach this weekend, we've had additional workers who have joined us, a lot of retirees who are helping to keep parking going during this time, so last year this time, we didn't have parking going on at this time, but we have several retirees who are manning the beach on the weekends now, so that's a good thing, that was the add for this year as the college students were going home, so that's one thing. Last week, storm, I just want to commend the cemetery, Jeff Leneski, but also vector control and the street department. You know, Jeff reached out to vector and to street for some additional support. They were saying that their operations without their help would have been postponed several weeks out, but they were able to come in and help them for the last week with that straight wind storm that came through. So again, our departments are starting to work collectively to gather whenever they need help, which is unheard of in previous years. So whenever there's an issue, they all come to support and help and and help with the cleanup, so that's a good thing. Last council meeting, I know there there was quite a bit of conversation about the repeal of the ordinance at the last council meeting, I just wanted to make sure that I restate a couple of things because we had a great workshop, I thought it was a good workshop that we held as I presented that information to you. First, biggest thing is there was no criminal activity or anything that occurred. What really has happened prior to this last council? Again, administration kind of ate up about ten million dollars of the riverboat, the riverboat reserves. Last administration didn't spend as much money, which is a good thing, thank goodness, and we did try to put controls in as the last council. It's just, they weren't followed and we we know that, but really the biggest thing was the over projection of revenues. Revenues were over projected and we budgeted against over projected revenues and basically from a council perspective, when we're given those numbers for the revenues, we expect them to be correct or as close as accurate, so what you will see when you get your budget books is a very conservative revenue projection from this administration. I'm in the midst of starting to make my cuts now, so you'll see some changes that occur. And and those will be explained to you, our goal is to have the books to you next week, we're gonna have a workshop on the tenth for the workbooks, but definitely not over projecting the revenues and that that's really what happened in a nutshell over the last two two years is that there's been an over projection of revenues and we've been budgeting against that. And we cannot make those numbers work based on our the ordinance that was in in place, but that was really in a nutshell, I know we can get down a rabbit hole and pointing fingers and all of that. But there, yeah, if we're gonna point fingers, it was an over projection of the revenues and the council did what we did, we cut, actually, we cut the budget and so thank God we did that because it would be even worse if we hadn't cut the river riverboat funds. So I I do want to state that tomorrow, though, is the workshop for the fee analysis at five P M. Tomorrow, we're gonna present the Baker Tilly information. We're gonna give you the draft of the ordinance that will go on in October, it's gonna go on the October meeting, the first meeting in October because we're gonna have to do another workshop after that. And that will include the refuse department and some other ones that weren't a part of the Baker Tilly. I don't want to confuse the two because I have Baker Tilly there tomorrow, so we're just gonna present all their findings and then we're gonna come back and and have a second workshop to answer any questions that you have on what you heard last night and so that you can kind of have the the ordinance in front of you with the changes for the next several weeks to kind of really take your time with it, because it's a lot of information. A lot of these permits and fees hadn't been updated since the seventies, so it's it's tedious and I think you're gonna need a little bit more time than just trying to get it on the agenda, the next agenda, I think we need another workshop after that because it was a lot of information. And part of that is refuse that we're gonna be looking at fees and and some things with that as well, so we're gonna need another workshop. We're looking at the last week of the month in September, I think me and Amber came up with the date, but I don't have it with me. So I just wanted to make sure that I I share that with you. Other than that, I know Dora, I think it was tabled, I want to say that because I I have to leave after this, but I supported, I hadn't seen anything that would make me not support it. Other, I received both sides of the fence and email from community members that are for and some that are against it, but several municipalities in Indiana have enacted it and they haven't seemed to seem, they haven't seen an uptick in any issues or anything around it. I just think we need to be very cognizant of what type of signage that we have and and how we communicate it. And then the last thing I want to bring up is the farmers market, this came up at the senior, my coffee with the seniors. And a couple of things, I'm with that, one of the things was, there were some comments made and I kind of want to address it, so we're not gonna move the farmers market to the west side, we are gonna do more programming on the west side, the way Pullman Field, there are a couple of comments about safety and some of it felt unwarranted, some of the comments about the safety on the west side, which I I took offense to, but I think Pullman Field is a great facility and we are gonna try to improve the facility to have more programming there in the neighborhood. The other piece of that is in talking to the collective who will be handling it, they handle farmers markets throughout Northwest Indiana, including New Buffalo, is they feel that it should be downtown and I agree, if that's what you believe and you, you know, talk to them, I'm fine with that, so we'll stay downtown, now where, I I don't know. But one thing that I can be certain of is that our farmers market is the cheapest and it's almost free compared to anywhere else, okay? And one of the reasons that we were looking at moving the farmers market was to really support food deserts and allow the opportunity for a residence to use that benefits at that location. So our farmers market has grown, but when you compare it to what you see in other cities, in La Corte and Chesterton and everywhere else, there's an opportunity for our farmers market, there truly is, so I'm not gonna back away from the fact that the decision that was made, one thing I will say is I should have taken a step back and had a better conversation with the vendors and I have no problem saying that. So I will make every attempt to set up that meeting with the vendors, but I still believe we're moving in the right direction, we want a thriving enhanced opportunity and experience for not just tourists and people who live from other, live in other places, we want our residents to attend the farmers market as well. So again, I have no problem stepping back and sticking my foot in my mouth or saying I'm sorry for something, but my goal, end goal is that it grows and that there's an opportunity for our residents to have other means of getting fresh fruits and vegetables, so again, any questions for me, willing to take any questions?
And I just have, and I think the email went out today, but that E S G workshop we were talking about, that's gonna be on September the eleventh at five thirty.
Okay.
Yeah, so that fits into one of your dates that was available.
Okay.
All right.
All right, I'll be there.
Councilman Danny?
Well, mayor, I'm gonna say I stuck my foot in my mouth with you because I thought it was a great idea to go over to the west side.
Well, and and we we're still gonna program there, I did have some conversations about doing two kind of food insecurity events over there and then Will Walker is looking at, we're looking at doing some neighborhood summer camps at all of the local neighborhood parks, kind of bringing the camps to the neighborhoods, that's what we're calling the program. So we're still gonna have have that and and then hopefully, fingers crossed, we get this earmark money for that center, the community center over there at Willard, so we're still gonna have opportunities to still do the same thing, it'll just be different. Yeah, different.
Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, all have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports from city departments or officers, I don't believe so? Madam clerk, are there any petitions before us this evening?
There are no petitions.
Communications?
In accordance with ordinance number four five three eight, the clerk's office received the following incident report from the Michigan City Police Department on August nineteenth regarding an accident that took place on August sixteenth twenty twenty four. Correspondence was also received in the clerk's office on August sixteenth from the Indiana Department of Fire and Mental Management regarding the final decision for deer crop recycling and disposal facility. Eric Kerbeck.
Thank you, madam clerk, and our first resolution before us this evening?
A resolution by title only, a resolution or ordinance for appropriation and tax rates for the Michigan City Library, and this is introduced by Mr. Preszbalinski.
And I don't have anything to add to the resolution this evening. And we know that it's dealing with the public library and it's for the repairs of the roof and we did have a formal public hearing, which was held on August twentieth and it was advertised in the News Dispatch on August the ninth twenty twenty four. With that being said, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wishes to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wishes to speak on this resolution? Public comment is closed, anyone from the council wishes to speak on this resolution? Councilman Dabney? Motion to approve?
Support.
Second.
Motion to approve and seconded by Councilman Beatry, Ms. Nylam on the vote?
Mr. Nelson? Mr. Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
And Ms. Moldenar?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nylam. Our next resolution, please?
A resolution by title only, approving and adopting the Michigan City Public Library twenty twenty five budget pursuant to I C code six dash one, one dash seventeen dash twenty point three, and this is also introduced by Mr. Preszbalinski.
And as I said, to the previous resolution, this is for the public library to approve this and adopt our budget so they can go ahead and do the work to the roof. And we did have a formal public hearing on August twentieth and this was advertised also in the News Dispatch on August the ninth. Public comment is now open, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this resolution?
Hello, council, Scott Melantur in Kewett Place, I just think it's good to point out that this isn't costing the city any money, this is just a bookkeeping thing that the law changed and the library has to ask you guys to prove that they spend their own money on this, if I understood that correctly. So it's just something that the public should know that this isn't coming out of Michigan City's municipal budget, that it's the library's own funds that are being approved here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishes to speak on this resolution? Anyone else from the public wishes to speak on this resolution? Having none, council comments? Councilman Beatry?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Beatry and seconded by Councilman Cora, Ms. Nylam on the vote?
Mr. Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Moldenar?
Aye.
And Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
And thank you, Ms. Nylam. Our next, our first ordinance on second reading by title only, Ms. Nylam?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance adopting and establishing designated outdoor refreshment areas in the city of Michigan City, Indiana, creating Article six in chapter twenty six of the Michigan City Municipal Code, and this is introduced by Mr. Coulter, Ms. Lee and Mr. Beatry.
And do the authors have there anything they'd like to add? Mr. Beatry?
Mr. President, kudos again to Councilor Coulter, he's done a great job on vetting this and getting information to all of us that we would need to make to vote on it. But he's not, he's not here and he won't be here till the next meeting, so I think in deference to that, we should just leave it on the leave it on the table until our next meeting, so I would, I would move we remain on the table till our next meeting.
Okay, so that's a motion by Councilman Beatry to remain, keep the ordinance on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Lee, Ms. Nylam on the vote?
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Moldenar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
And Mr. Preszbalinski?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
And Ms. Nylam, our first ordinance on third reading this evening by title only?
The ordinance on third reading by title only, amending section one oh two dash one A, section one oh two one B in the Michigan City Municipal Code, commonly referred to as removal of weeds, grass and rank vegetation, and this is introduced by Ms. Moldenar, Ms. Lee and Mr. Coulter.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Councilwoman Moldenar?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to just present a very brief overview of what we're talking about. I brought some pictures this morning, this evening that were provided by individuals that have actually done native vegetation in their yards. So I want to give people an idea of what these native gardens look like. These first few slides are in Kathy Sipple's yard and she lives in Valparaiso. And as you can see, this is her front yard, front yard, the next one is, that's her backyard there, okay? Next one, this is a backyard also. Next one, this is her front yard. Next one, these came from actually Evanston, Illinois, and their whole community is actually certified as a native habitat area. So these actually are an example of what could be done in the city right of way. This is an apartment complex that you can see by the sign, it's actually been certified by the, as a wildlife habitat. This is an idea of what could happen in the city right of way. These are actually native grasses that have been planted there. Next, this is another close up of the apartment complex here. And then this is an individual's garden, their backyard, and then this is a more natural type setting that again is in somebody's backyard, as you can see, they have a number of native plants around there and then they actually have a bench, you know, where they can sit down there and enjoy butterflies, birds and whatever else. What I picked up is sometimes it's hard to pick up things auditorily, I know that I have oral and aural dyslexia, so I took the time to write down some of the key points that are happening in this ordinance so that we're clear as far as what we've been asked to do and what we're trying to accomplish. This is the removal of weeds, grass and rank vegetation ordinance. Mayor Angie Nelson Dyche and forester Mike Wolf have recommended what additions are needed for staff to deal with the weeded yard versus pollinator garden confusion. And these recommendations are included in the revised rank vegetation ordinance. Okay, so I want to be clear that it's the mayor and her staff that actually came up with these recommendations. They did loop in Skylar York and also vector control, planning and vector control, so they have been part of this process. The next point is that legal counsel Amber Lappage has advised this is a standalone section and that the and that the suggested city right of way ideas need to be included in a new section because they do not fit within the narrow focus of this revision. So she communicated this from the time that Mike and I started to include some of the very good suggestions that were made by people that were attending this meeting and she said, hold on, wait a minute, let's get this done and then we can proceed with these other ideas. Legal counsel has also pointed out that the corner field division is already covered by the zoning for corner clearance ordinance and that's in section fifteen point oh six. So I know there was probably most of the concern was coming to these intersections and people not being able to see around the corner before they pull out into traffic, so that actually is already covered, I looked at it when I was doing my research, it follows all of what would be called best practices for the number of feet, how far the triangulation goes and everything else, so the city ordinance follows best practices of engineering and also what other cities have done. The next point is that we have promised to work on authoring either a new section in an existing ordinance or create another ordinance to set forth guidelines for the city right of way plantings. Okay, I want everybody to understand that I have made notes of all of the suggestions that were made, they're written down. We are gonna continue working on this because when gaps are pointed out that exist in our ordinances, then we want to take care of those so everybody is clear as far as what they're supposed to be doing before citations are issued to people unnecessarily. And then the final point is, I already said this, all suggestions received so far have been noted, I have them written down in my notebook and if anyone else has recommendations, you can kindly email them to And if anyone else has recommendations, you can kindly email them to me at nancyforvision@gmail.com. That's if you're not at this meeting. Okay? Certainly you, you can, and I do welcome you making comment today if you have any other additions that you think we've missed. And then, um, also too, I'll be available after the city council meeting. If you want to come up and talk to me, I'm more than willing to have a conversation with you.
Okay, any other authors have anything they'd like to add? Okay, anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Having none, council comments? Councilman Cora?
Mr. President, I want to thank, uh, Councilman Moldenar for the work she has done on this and the work you have done to improve, um, this ordinance and take everybody's uh, inputs. So thank you very much for doing that.
Councilman Dabney?
Ditto. Word right out of my mouth.
Okay, I, I do have a couple, uh, questions on this and, uh, going back into the, uh, ordinance, uh, we have the city controller's office. That's mentioned in being in this ordinance. I guess my question is why does the city control, what does the city controller have to do with this type of ordinance? As it states right here, responsibility for the administration of this ordinance is the central services department through the vector control division shall be responsible for the administration of this section. The city, the city controllers, the city attorney, and the city forester. So I just want to know what the city controller has to do with this ordinance.
Michael Wolf, uh, city forester. Yeah, in regard to that question, I don't believe that was added in. I believe that was in the original ordinance. So I don't know why it was in there, but it was not added in.
Okay. But does it need to be there? What does the city, I, my question is what does the city controller have to do with rank vegetation and uh, you know, the description of removal of weeds, grass, and rank vegetation? That's what my question is.
Mr. President, I
Would, would her name? Beatty?
Would her name be in there? Because if there's a, a fine that's being assessed, it would, it would come to her attention. Or she would
I don't know. I mean,
I saw, I agree with you. I, the only thing I can see is that if there's a fine imposed upon a resident, the controller's office could be involved.
Yeah, I mean, if it's going to be in, if this is going to be in the ordinance, then we should know why it's in the ordinance. And I can't get an answer to that.
Mr. President, I can, you have a comment? Yeah, I have a comment. Uh, I can see why the controller's office may be involved. Let's just say something happens where something has to be cut, something has to be done, removed, or anything like that that's not budgeted. We probably would need to, to go back and, and talk to the, uh, controller's office at some point for an additional whatever it may be. Uh, I'm just putting that out there as to why they would be involved. Obviously, it's going to have something to do with money. And I can just think of, you know, something needed to be done, uh, that would cost us, cost the city funds. Like I said, um, something may, may need to be cut down. It's not in the budget. We may need to appropriate a couple of dollars here, there to do that. I can see that, but I mean, I can see that being a very rare occasion, but I can envision something like that happening down the line.
Okay. Okay, well, my point is this has been sponsored by Councilwoman Moldenar and Councilwoman Lee and they're the ones that put the ordinance together. So I'm just trying to get a answer. I know that Councilman Dabney, uh, answered and Councilman Beatty, the forester. You know, I'm just trying to get an answer to why that's in there.
This, um, ordinance was originally authored by, um, city councilwoman Pat Boy when it was passed. And she has not been here since, um, the first introduction of it. So, um, she would know why that was put in there. Honestly, we were just looking at putting additions in there so that we would be able to distinguish between weeded yards and pollinator gardens. So that was our purpose in updating that.
Attorney?
Mr. President, uh, the reason that the controller is contemplated in the ordinance is because for situations where there are yards that have rank vegetation, uh, that's grown in excess of what's allowed by the ordinance, this particular ordinance allows for the city to actually go and take care of the rank vegetation and and bring the particular property compliant. Now, because that's done with taxpayer dollars, that cost then has to be assessed and passed on to the landowner. The, the controller would be essential in, um, in identifying specifically what those costs are so that those costs can be passed along to the landlord.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, also, uh, I also believe that the police department, the traffic division is what I'm going to say, needs to be or should have been in this ordinance. And I did mention it to the, uh, sponsor. Because although the forester may go out and take a look at an intersection, I still believe that the police department, traffic division commander needs to look at that intersection to get his opinion on it. Because I know the intersection I'm talking about at the corner of Charles and Washington Street. I've already been told that the vehicular or the vision triangle looking out is within state requirements. Uh, but when you pull up right by the stop sign, you pull up right by the stop bar, you cannot see to the right. There's a tree sitting right there. You can't see it on a sidewalk. You can't see if someone's walking towards the intersection, towards your car. You can't see if a child or an adult is riding a bike down the sidewalk. And the answer I got, well, if you pull out a little bit further towards the intersection, then you get your site visibility, uh, standard. But, and I, and I asked the city forester to go over there and take another look at it and possibly get this tree removed so that you can get a clear sight of vision coming up Washington Street. And as of today, that tree still sits there. So you know, if, if we're going to do something here, let's make it safe throughout the city and abide by the rules. And why that's not in here, I don't know.
Again, Michael Wolf, city forester. And, uh, yes, sir, I would like to address that specific problem that you mentioned. The reason is it doesn't apply to this ordinance. This ordinance applies to private property, not right of ways. Hence the reason we needed to write another ordinance or amend another ordinance to adjust for that. So your your objection to a line of sight issue and not having police involved and bringing other people in does not apply to the ordinance. That's why it wasn't done.
Okay. I, I believe. Okay, I believe, I believe it should, I believe it should be because as the presentation indicated, we're talking about easements. I heard easements. Okay, used. To me, that's city easements. So okay, another question that I have?
Mr. President, may I address the, um, police department being involved, please?
Sure, go ahead.
I contacted Chief Marty Corley and he said his department would have no jurisdiction over the, um, over the site triangles.
Okay. Well, I will contact the chief and talk to him. Uh, let's see, the next one is, uh, where it says the undesirable vegetation. Uh, so if I'm growing something in my yard, right, and we're talking about yards here, or are we talking to city easements?
Yards.
Yards, you're right. Well, you had mentioned city easements a couple of times in the presentation, so just wanted to get that clear. So you know, who's going to determine what I have in my yard as a weed or something that's undesirable? To me, I may like what I have in my yard. You know, depending on what, depending on what the plant is. I mean, I've seen some plants in people's yards that have been there for ever. So what is determined as undesirable?
Michael Wolf, city forester. The ordinance, uh, is written that vector control with the assistance of the street department and the forester make that call. So that's who's responsible for making the call. The one of the three of us or a combination of the three of us make that call.
Okay. And okay, so we're just talking about a homeowner's yard here and not the, uh, city easement. Yep. Okay. All right, uh, those are all the, uh, questions I had. Are there any other questions by council members? Having none? Yeah, any other comments by the council?
They, they did public comment already. You just had the extended comment session with us. Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Dabney and seconded by Councilman Cora. Ms. Nyelob on the vote?
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Moldenar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Prozabulinski?
Nay.
And Mr. Beatty?
Aye.
We have six in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyelob. And we are now under unfinished business. The, uh, council has two appointments, nominations. Those two appointments to the revolving loan uh, fund committee. The incumbents right now are Pia Parrott and Erica Miller, whose term expires October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Are there any nominations from any council members this evening?
We have not received any, um, people to
Any applications?
Yeah.
No?
No, we haven't. But, um, we did send one to both of these ladies and they are supposed to return them if they are interested.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Nyelob. Ms. Moldenar?
Um, I had a question. If one of them is a senior level professional loan officer and the other is a member of a business or retail who's a resident of Michigan City, do we know that?
Um, I believe yes. Uh, one of them is a realtor for sure. The other one is, uh, works at Horizon Bank.
Thank you.
Okay, um, comments from the public?
Hi, Tommy Klobic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I have a few public service announcements to make. Uh, the finish on the fifty-five K run Saturday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four at Ames Field. It's, uh, thirty dollars to participate. They want you to be registered by that Friday on Sep- September thirteenth by three P M. Uh, Michigan City Football Hall of Fame and the Michigan City Football Team's inaugural five K run and walk. The five K three point one miles race will begin at Ames Field and continue to the streets of downtown Michigan City. Racers will return to Ames Field to participate in a football obstacle course with finishing the race on the fifty yard line. T-shirts for our participants, refreshments, entry to the tailgate after party. And yeah, I got a website. You can all go sign up and all and whatnot. I just want to announce that Sunday night will be the big day. We get to see, uh, Mr. Brayden Fest make his NFL debut for the Los Angeles Rams. It'll be Sunday Night Football, Rams at Lions at Ford Field on NBC. He's about to embark on what's bound to be an all pro career in the National Football League. Yeah, I, I also want to mention that, uh, I know I went on the S R I website and the county's going to be having another tax sale on uh, October the nineteenth. It's going to be at the, uh, courthouse annex in La Porte, like ten A M. You pre-read, they'll have the list of all the properties like thirty days prior to the auction. So, you know, you know, there are always about maybe a couple hundred properties, parcels right here within the city that's always on that sale. Now, here, here's a good chance to maybe, maybe get a fixer upper house for you and your family. Maybe you got that young adult, you're trying to finally get out of the house. Or you might get an open lot, have a place for your children to go play or, you know. The most important thing, we get these properties back on the tax rolls, maybe get some cleaned up. Um, so I want to say, I think, uh, maybe a good alternate site for the farmer's market would be the three acres north of the administration building on Carroll Avenue. You know, not only the west side's a, a food desert, the east side's a food desert, probably Eastport residents have been bellyaching for a grocery store pretty much ever since K and M closed down. Now, I was thinking about being a vendor for our farmer's market myself. What I was thinking about doing is establishing a chicken coop area where, where I could sell little baby chickens. There's an, and a franchise, I have me a pop-up movie theater to get people and then, you know, to the farmer's market and to my chicken coop area. And the only movies I'm going to type of movies I'll show in my chicken coop area will go be nothing but chick flicks. Thank you.
Hmm. All right. Thank you, Tommy.
Follow that one. Ernie Hollahan, three oh two Gladys Street. Uh, couple of things that Nancy informed me that they did the lines on all they put was a white line at the stop in front. There's, it's all they've done. They didn't paint the yellow yellow line down in the white. So they still don't know which lanes they're in until they paint those. But that's all for you to stop right there at that big white line. That's all they painted across it. And that weed thing, I, I'm confused on that. I, I worked for the vector control, uh, years ago, back in the nineties. Uh, cutting lots for the city. And my interpretation was a certain amount of length on your yard is when they give you a warning.
Mm-hmm.
And if you don't cut it in a certain period of time, then they come and cut it and they charge you for it. And if you don't pay it, your property goes on tax sale. That was my interpretation of, of the weeds and, or grass. So I don't know about all this other stuff. It's confusing now.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Cell, Dunlap, seven twenty-nine East Michigan Boulevard. There are, in addition to my property in the seven hundred block on East Michigan Boulevard, there are two houses right there at Seventh. Right there at Seventh, they're committed to be demolished. And I want whatever department is in charge of making sure that the landscaping is done the way it should be done, that they are on that property just to the south of those two properties were leveled and whoever tore them down didn't do a job worth a damn. But we need to make sure that that's, that's done the way that it is capable of being taken care of. The other is that there's some water on the sidewalk there at Bethel. Been there for over two damn decades. Stays there. And I think it's a disgrace. A real disgrace. A real disgrace. Now, I am an honorary member of Bethel. Having lived right up the street there, I've been in touch with all, all of the clergy that has been blessed by that church. And for that water to be there standing the way it is, it's very disrespectful. Very disrespectful. So I want to put this out there with you. Sorry that my alderman isn't here this evening, but I'll, I'll personally call him. And I will also be going to the building inspector's department tomorrow and to lodge my formal complaint regarding those two situations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap.
Good evening, Dakota Uler, 718.
Go ahead, Dakota. I didn't know you were on this.
Dakota Uler, 718 Emma Street. I know this generally isn't question and answer, but I was wondering if you could publicly announce the budget hearings at the end of the meeting. It would be a benefit to the public to bring that to their knowledge. Thank you.
Well, I would, but I don't know when they are. We haven't gotten the emails yet when the budget hearings start. Go ahead.
Hello, Scott Mallon, Tarrant, Kedwood Place. My suggestion for the farmer's market is to put it on Franklin Square at our municipal plaza at Seventh Street. That's now been electrified. It's a central location. And the long-suffering commercial tenants on Franklin Street, you know, we build a synergy when you bring people to a downtown area. That'd be my recommendation, using a municipal asset that's centrally located. As far as the weed ordinance, there's a lot of confusion about it. We already have a tree lawn ordinance for the parkway areas. That tree that you're speaking of, it could be cut down tomorrow because that's city property. This ordinance only allows the city to go onto private property. And we've added a check of the forester. So vector control doesn't say, that's just junky stuff, we're going to cut it down. Now you get a, a professional opinion that, no, that's a pollinator garden, we're not going to cut that down. And typically, in every city I've ever lived in, when the city is forced to do work on private property, that means you're getting billed for that work because you haven't taken care of it yourself, which would indicate, I think, why the controller is part of the ordinance. People are being fined. And as Ernie said, if you don't pay the fine, you get a lien on your property. It clubs the title. So we'll, we, we, we need to keep, be clear about this, this new weed ordinance. It's about private property, not anything to do with the, the parkway or the easement. That's a whole separate thing that'll be coming later. So we just need to, this just gives the city the authority to go onto private property, which I guess wasn't clear before. So this is just clearing up an existing ordinance and adding a third, a, a third set of eyes to make sure we're not taking down nice plantings. You know, this is clearly intended for vacant, decrepit yards. That's all. So let's just stay, you know, it's, be focused on what it is and not what it's not. That's causing a lot of confusion for a lot of people, it seems. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Public comment is now closed. Comments from the council? Council comments? Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Excuse me, please. Just want to bring on to everybody's attention the, the seminar that's happening. It's entitled Reduce and Reuse Northwest Indiana Has a Plastics Problem. And this is directly related to Michigan City sending too much trash to the landfill, which costs us money. So anything we can do as a community to bring the tonnage down is going to be beneficial to us. This is happening this Thursday, the 5th of September at 6:30 PM. You can join on Save the Dunes Facebook Live or you can obtain the Zoom link from Em, that's E M, at savedunes.org. Again, for the Zoom link, that's Em, which is spelled E M, at savedunes.org. I hope people will join us for this. She's very passionate. She's inspiring and she's very knowledgeable regarding plastic waste. So I think everybody gets something out of it. Thank you.
Anyone else from the council wish to speak? Anything, Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, I think it's about time to, to give some positive shouts out to some of our city workers. First, I want to start with what happened with Labor Day, the Oktoberfest. I'm still calling it Labor Days. But the park department was down there emptying trash and, and keeping that place clean while the activities and the events were going on. There was something going on at the North Point Pavilion under the stage. And there's a lot over there, a lot going on. And I saw these guys running around changing these garbage cans to, to keep it looking good down there while activities were going on. And then also I want to, you know, talk about Terry Greatham, who was really doing his thing in terms of event planning for us here in Michigan City. They got some really positive things going on. And I was trying to catch him to, to tell him about it the other day, but he was running and I didn't feel like chasing after him. So I said, I'll just talk, talk about it in the, the meeting here. Street department. I was riding up Woodland Avenue coming across right there where Queen of All Saints is at. I had to duck to the side. There was a hole in the ground. This is, this one happened maybe a month or so back. And I jumped out of my car, snapped a quick picture, sent it over to Sean Smith. And by the time I got home, later that day, I went the same route to come home. It had been patched over to make sure we didn't bottom out somebody's car right there. And there's been numerous times that I've done things like that with Sean, where I've sent a picture, text message to him, come back, it's taken care of. So I just wanted to give some of the people that work for us, you know, our backbone of what we do here in the city, just some, some kudos for what they do. And I see cold enforcement out there as well, working very hard. I know that's probably one of the tougher jobs in the city because of the confrontation that can be brought when you're actually, you know, having to give a citation to somebody. So thank them for their hard work as well. So I just wanted to give a shout out to some of our city workers, the backbone of Michigan City.
Anyone else from the council wish to say anything? Just a couple of comments I have. As the mayor spoke and I can concur what she says, lots of city employees involved in the last rainstorm and windstorm and how quickly everything got cleaned up. So, and I know that the cemetery had a big issue going on out there and they got everything cleaned up very well. So I'm not going to mention any names, but all the departments as a whole did a fantastic job. And also the Oktoberfest, I was there Sunday night, yeah. And watched one of my favorite bands, the Together Band. And it was a lot of fun, a lot of people from Michigan City there. And Park Department, Terry Greatham, the whole group did a fantastic job. Now for the, for the city council, you can mark your calendars for September the 11th at 5:30 PM. And we're going to have an ESG workshop in the room back here. And ESG has been in, not an issue, but I think a lot of council members want to know exactly what ESG is all about. So they had sent myself and the city engineer, Tim Warner, an email. Because Tim is actually the keeper of the ESG results when they come in and the contract. So they said that they have great news for Michigan City, that Michigan City, they have been meeting the contract and Michigan City's actually been exceeding the contract that the results were given. So the gentleman's name is Terry and he's going to be here on the 11th. And besides the results that he's going to show us, you know, if you have any questions whatsoever about this contract, if you have any questions whatsoever on how long this contract's going to go, how much this contract is costing the city, now is your time to get your answers. So if you have any questions, if I, if I was you, I would take a couple of minutes to write them down on paper and be ready to go. And I don't think it's going to be an hour long workshop. This workshop could go for a couple hours. So be prepared to come and learn what this is all about because this here is a city council contract. This isn't necessarily a city contract, which the city's involved, but the city council is the, is the body that signed this contract when they came to Michigan City with this idea. And that was under Mayor, Mayor's administration that this was, was, this was done. So with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, meeting is now over.